This is the May 8, 2017 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the meeting recording this meeting otherwise? Being done, can we all stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no public comment tonight, so we're going to get right into the agenda. We have a presentation tonight from the Fire Chief Steve Coleman and the SEMLEC Motorcycle Unit. So we'd invite you all to come up and join us here at the table.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, if it's acceptable to you, I do have Lieutenant Lemon and Chief Ford here. If, with your permission, if we would be able to get through the entire presentation with all three of us, and then we would be happy to entertain any questions.
That would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I believe the two are tied in, if we could move up Agenda Item 5B1, which is the fire rescue gift acceptance, then the chief can discuss it and we can take action on it under this item, so we don't have to keep the chief here.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm happy to be here tonight to announce a new program initiative within the Auburn Fire Rescue Department that will support the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council, also known as SEMLEC. With me tonight is Lieutenant Todd Lemon from the Auburn Police Department, as well as Chief Tom Ford from the Sturbridge Police Department, who are both leaders within SEMLEC. This new initiative will support SEMLEC, which as a department, we have been doing for over 15 years by providing EMS support to the SEMLEC SWAT team. Currently, we have one paramedic assigned to the SWAT team who trains and responds on SWAT activations to provide advanced medical care and treatment to injured SWAT officers. This new program will provide EMS support to another SEMLEC team, the motorcycle unit. The department has leased and will be outfitting a 2017 Harley-Davidson motorcycle with advanced life support equipment to be embedded into the SEMLEC motor unit. Although some may think it is unconventional for firefighters or EMS providers to deliver care from a motorcycle, there are successful EMS motor units around the country, including Connecticut. Although we are not the first EMS motorcycle unit to operate in Massachusetts, we will be the first to operate a motorcycle at the advanced life support level. The island of Nantucket operated four EMS motorcycles for many years at the basic life support level. I am so proud to work for this community because we are looked at as forward-thinking and visionaries. We are not afraid to do something new, and we're not afraid to be the first at something. This community and our department have a longstanding history and tradition with that philosophy. And just two quick public safety examples to demonstrate that point is both Mass Fire District 7 and SEMLEC are two strong, thriving organizations that are designed to enhance and promote regionalization efforts and coordinate mutual aid and interoperability. Do you know where both of those organizations got their start? Right here, in the town of Auburn. The first efforts to organize Fire District 7 into what it is today started on the second floor of Auburn Fire Headquarters. SEMLEC was started and based out of the Auburn Police Station with only four communities in the early years. SEMLEC now serves over 80 communities with specialized services throughout Worcester County and beyond. Auburn has never been afraid to step up, recognize a problem, and find a creative solution. That is what was done with the creation of this motor unit. I would like to briefly talk about the public safety need for this program and how it was conceived. In the months following the loss of Auburn Police Officer Ron Tarantino and retired Fire Chief Bellhumor, I was having a conversation with Lieutenant Lemon about how much easier it was today to organize resources and ask for assistance now that formalized special services programs were in place through the Fire District and SEMLEC. We got on a discussion about the motor unit and through conversation discovered the amount of times that they are witness to incidents or medical emergencies that occur at events that they are participating in, and there is no immediate medical care available. Medical emergencies have occurred with both motor unit officers themselves as well as the public. Lieutenant Lemon expressed concern over their lack of EMS and showed interest in embedding EMS into the motor unit similar to the SWAT team. This concept would provide immediate care and treatment for motor officers on assignment. Just this past summer, a motor officer collided with another motorcycle during a traffic escort mission on a motorcycle ride. It was a remote community and took just over 20 minutes for an ambulance to arrive on scene. Upon recognizing that there was a true need for such a unit to provide our motor offices and the public with immediate advanced life support, I launched a careful study of other motor unit programs across the country. I looked at their training, funding sources, and evaluating the sustainability and how to operate such a motor unit locally. For me, it became an easy decision, understanding that this was possible. Another benefit to the program that may not be visible on the surface is providing our employees with challenging opportunities outside of their normal day-to-day operations. This assists with employee retention. People want to work in Auburn because of our reputation and the things that we are involved in. Firefighter EMTs that have expanded opportunities and challenges are most likely to remain with their agencies. Law enforcement councils and Fire Departments provide members those opportunities in their local agencies that are usually only typically available in larger cities. Other local examples of these expanded opportunities include our Regional Dive Team, which has police officers currently serving on it. Technical Rescue Team, Communications, Fire Investigation, District Assist Teams, all expanded opportunities for our members to take part. I also want to discuss the financial aspect of this program. As mentioned earlier, one of my many decision-making factors was whether or not this program would be affordable and sustainable. In order to do so, we would have to model our program identical to that of the Auburn Police Department, where none of the officers receive overtime compensation for their assignment to SEMLEC, including both missions and training. Officers receive comp time for time worked. Our program will be the same. No firefighters will receive overtime compensation for their assignment or their initial training. Like other comp time owed, they will be granted as not to incur overtime to the department. Tonight, the board will be asked to accept four separate donations totaling $12,100 towards the startup costs of this motor unit. I would humbly ask you to accept those donations with gratitude. In addition, SEMLEC has provided $9,000 in equipment for the motorcycle. In total, we will have received $21,100 in both grants and donations, and I do expect that number to climb. We will continue to pursue Homeland Security Grants and other alternative funding sources as we always have. The town has currently expended a total of $3,065 from the Fire Rescue Department's FY '17 operating budget, $1,495 from our professional development line item to send one member to the 80-Hour Police Motorcycle School, and $1,570 for the first year of a three-year lease on the motorcycle. The training cost is a one-time expense, leaving the annual total to operate the program at the cost of the lease for $1,570. And I am anticipating that through donations, years two and three of the lease will be covered. Also, in future years, we will consider shifting that cost to ambulance receipts. This is what makes the program financially realistic and sustainable through my current operating budget without an additional request for funding through the budget process. This is a very small amount of money compared to what we as a community and region have received in grant money alone. In the four years that I have served as chairman of Mass Fire District 7, I have overseen the acceptance of a million dollars in Homeland Security money for equipment and training, including backfill and overtime. Much of that equipment is housed on apparatus and trailers in the town of Auburn. Hundreds of thousands of dollars has been saved in equipment and training through our regional efforts. SEMLEC has a similar story, receiving $746,000 in equipment and training. The cost of the lease on the motorcycle is a small price to pay for the regional benefits that our community has enjoyed. The three department members that have been selected for this motor unit have all been with the department for over 10 years and have been avid motorcyclists for over 20. They are Captain Justin Brigham, who will be overseeing the unit internally within the department, and the liaison to the SEMLEC leadership; firefighter Fran Hartnett and firefighter Scott Henderson, all responsible, conscientious riders and employees. All three members will be attending the 80-Hour Motorcycle Training School at Northwestern University Center for Public Safety in Weymouth, Mass., where national trainers will put them through an intense two-week program, the same program that our Auburn Police Motor Officers have graduated. In closing, this EMS motorcycle is to support the efforts of SEMLEC Motor Unit. It will not be used day-to-day to respond to emergencies within the town of Auburn. In addition to its SEMLEC responsibilities, its purposes for special events and details. The program is financially realistic and sustainable. The program has been researched thoroughly and has the full support of the SEMLEC Board of Directors that voted to authorize the program on April 25, 2017, as well as the full support of Chief Slukas. SEMLEC has expressed a need for EMS support, and the Auburn Fire Rescue Department is proud to step forward and provide that support as we have done for over 15 years. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would ask Lieutenant Lemon, who serves as the SEMLEC Motor Unit Commander, to say a few words, followed by Chief Ford, who is the chief that oversees the motor unit on behalf of SEMLEC.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to be present this evening, and congratulations. Mrs. Brotherton, on your service at the town of Auburn. So I'm the lucky guy that gets to report to two chiefs, Chief Slukas to my left, Chief Ford to my right. So I am the filling in between that sandwich, but I'm very honored. I will be brief, and it's amazing to me to think back that I have 30 years of service as a police officer, 25 of which I've been involved with the SEMLEC organization coming on to the origination of the SWAT team back in 1995. And what started out as just a couple of towns that grew into more than 80 cities and towns throughout Central Mass and even outside other counties now, other than Worcester County. It's been quite an accomplishment. Thinking back to last year after the murder of Ron Tarantino, we, the town of Auburn was hurting, the police department was hurting, and we needed resources, and a lot of law enforcement agencies stepped up. The Mass City Police were phenomenal, but the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council, both with their SWAT teams and their motor unit, they essentially came in and took over operations for us in town. They were able to facilitate and assist with the navigation and the coordination of both Roger Bellhumor's funeral and Officer Tarantino's funeral. It was quite a burden to see my brothers in blue step up for the town like they did. And that's just, that's just one example. And it doesn't go unnoticed that there was a paramedic, a UMass paramedic, that was assigned to the state police SWAT team, much like they're assigned to our Central Mass Law Enforcement Council SWAT team that treated the trooper that was shot, that apprehended Ron Tarantino's murderer. Last year, we had two motorcycle crashes involved in events, and one of which was very minor, the other one was somewhat more serious. Chief Coleman pointed out that we had a 20-minute wait out on Route 9 in one of the Brookfields when we were waiting for medical assistance, and that was when I knew that it was time to make a change. Although it may sound unconventional for someone in EMS or a firefighter to be on a motorcycle, we go in places where motor vehicles can't go, and they are just going to be an additional asset for our agency. We, year after year, we report to the Boston Marathon, we go out to the town of Sturbridge for the Pan-Mass Challenge, and we are an agency and an organization that Homeland Security depends on. So that's just, that's just a quick oversight. I'm not sure how many members of the board are aware, when the tornado swept through the central Massachusetts and devastated good portions of Western Mass, Palmer, Sturbridge. Sturbridge needed some assistance, and we deployed our motor unit out to the town of Sturbridge. And at Chief Ford's will, we were able to actually facilitate and answer calls from mutual aid. And this whole program is at very little cost to our community. And again, with Homeland Security funds that we've realized with communications and interoperability grants, the town of Auburn has, and our surrounding communities have definitely realized a tremendous benefit. So that's really all I have to say. I just thank you for allowing me to be here, and I think this is a tremendous program. And I'm, and I'll tell you, this is the reason I came to the town of Auburn, because we were cutting-edge. I left another small town. This is why we have, in my opinion, some of the best employees and one of the best police departments in the Commonwealth, because we have an open mind and we encourage new ideas and thinking outside the box.
Thank you, Lieutenant Lemon. Chief Ford, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the board members for allowing us the opportunity to come before you tonight to speak. As a representative and the motor unit chief, I'm happy and as well proud to be here for this particular moment. When the idea was first brought to me, I took with little hesitation on bringing it forward before the executive board, who couldn't understand from their standpoint the need for such a tool. However, once reminded that since 9/11, we continue as police, fire, and EMS to work under the same emergency management umbrella to continue to move our missions forward, we find ourselves on the grounds, training through many different, for many different events that involve large amounts of individuals, both at outdoor public events, indoor public events, and things that involve traffic. From that standpoint, many of the motor unit assignments have us moving organized amounts of people, hundreds of people, that are in motor vehicles at any given time. So the probability of something happening is going to, is going to be there always. To have emergency medical services integrated into the SEMLEC mission, into our operational readiness, to have advanced life support available to us at an instant is going to be paramount to the success of not only the function that we are involved in in that particular time, but to the future. And I think that once this kicks off with Auburn Fire and Rescue coming onboard with SEMLEC, I think that it's going to be contagious. I think it's going to go throughout the 80 towns that represent the Law Enforcement Council, and I think that we're going to see more units popping up all throughout our SEMLEC coverage area. I'd like to take this moment to thank Chief Coleman for his support, for his vision for this program, his ability to move this program forward, for the vision of Lieutenant Lemon for this program, working together as a team. Both of them brought this to SEMLEC, and we welcome the opportunity for Auburn to join SEMLEC in this capacity, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ford. We have Chiefs Lucas, our Auburn Police Chief, in the audience, and would you care to comment? Add anything to what they've brought forward tonight?
I think that they've laid it out relatively well, but yes, I am 100% in favor of this project and fully support it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Have any board members got any questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. Brotherton.
I've heard of camaraderie before, but to see police and fire together with their camaraderie is extremely overwhelming. Chief Slukas, Chief Coleman, you have continued to surprise us with your knowledge and your care for the town of Auburn. I support this project 100%, being in our times of essence, and it's clearly obvious that this is going to save time. And I support it, and I wish you the best in all your continued endeavors for our town. Thank you both, Lieutenant Lemon, both of your departments, for all of your involvement. Good luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Brotherton.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Coleman, Chief Ford, Lieutenant Lemon, and of course, Chief Lucas, thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you for allowing the public to hear about this very important project. You know, I had the opportunity today to attend the promotional ceremony for the Fire Department, and as Mrs. Brotherton said, we talked about the camaraderie, not only within the departments, but within the two departments. I have no, no concerns with being number one. I thank you for your forward thinking. Our department is known throughout the Commonwealth for their professionalism, their training, and I'm really excited about this project. You have my full support. I had the privilege of attending both the Police Academy, Citizens Police Academy, the Citizens Fire Academy, learned an awful lot about SEMLEC that I didn't know in the past, learned an incredible amount from Captain Brigham as he led the Citizens Fire Academy. And I can say with confidence, no offense, Chief, that we have the most professional fire departments and police departments in the Commonwealth, so you have my full support.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Bertheu.
I also want to say that I support it 100%, being a firefighter, being a motorcycle rider, being at that event that happened out on Route 9 as one of the first people that helped It gets very, traffic gets very congested very quickly, and one of my first thoughts was, how are they going to get ambulances to the scene? And they, they needed ambulances to the scene. And I really think that I was excited to hear when this idea came through, because I think that getting an ALS motorcycle equipped and an ALS technician on the scene very quickly is an incredible idea, so I'm also 100% in support of this.
Anybody else? For myself, I had a chance to meet with Chief Coleman, and when I first heard about it, it came through as an email, and I had many concerns. And we sat for over an hour with Chief Coleman and Deputy Chief Johnson, and they assured me that this program is going to go forward, it's the proper thing to do, and yeah, when you have groups of motorcycles, groups of anybody, you do need that additional support. And when they explained the program to me, just as you explained it tonight, it's just something like, wow, how come this hasn't been, happened before? And I think it's going to be a great thing all the way through, and you have the support of the professionals, and there's no questions, no concerns, you're going to go forward with this. And we wish you the very best, and thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for your comments.
We have moved up Item 5B1. These are the gift certificates for, not gift certificates, gift receipts, thank you, for the Fire Department, for this program. And I'd like to take them separately to be sure that, you know, everybody is identified on who is donated. The first one will be for Noria Energy Corporation for $6,000 for the ALS motorcycle equipment.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any?
If we can just hear from the chief a little bit about this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
About this, who this is.
Sure. The Noria Energy Company is the Shell Gas Station at the corner of Milbury and Route 20.
Okay, thank you. We have an anonymous donation of $100 for the EMS motorcycle. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to take them individually. The motion's been made and seconded for the Noria Energy Corporation. Is there any questions, comments? Mr. Carpenter.
I just wanted to ask Mrs. Goodrich to amend her motion so that we can send a letter of gratitude signed by the chair for...
I'm happy to make that.
Okay.
Amen.
Sharon, you have that? Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have an anonymous donation here for $100 for the EMS motorcycle. Mrs. Brotherton.
I'd like to make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have one for $3,000 from the Sturbridge Service Center. Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude and send a letter of thanks from the board signed by the chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And the last one we have for tonight is D'Renzo Towing for $3,000 for the EMS motorcycle.
I'd like to make a motion to accept with gratitude along with a letter signed by the chief.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chief, thank you very much. Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Do we just want to introduce ourselves quickly?
Yeah, can we, before you leave tonight, Captain Brigham?
Captain?
Yes. Sorry, we don't have... I'd like you just to come forward, just be recognized as your promotion today from lieutenant to captain in Auburn's Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and we also have...
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And we also have Deputy Chief Johnson, who is not with us tonight, but congratulations also go to him. And congratulations go to your Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your support. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody here from?
No.
Let's see. It's the Verizon pole that's going to be relocated? Anybody here from Verizon? We'll move that along, we'll table that for now. Okay. Okay, all right, yeah. So we've got now a joint meeting with the Master Plan Review Committee, and I'd like to turn this over to the chair and open your, your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call to order the May 8, 2017 meeting of the Master Plan Committee.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the Master Plan Committee. Just want to take the opportunity to thank you for all the work that you've been doing and will continue to do over this multi-year project, so we're very grateful for it. So for the members of the board and the Master Plan Committee, the reason we're here this evening is we have a, we have been working on an economic development plan that we wanted to present to you this evening, and as most of you know, we received designation as a comped community in February of last year, and as part of that designation, we had applied for and received a $25,000 grant from the state to form an economic development plan, identifying what the strengths are in the economy, weaknesses, and developing, ensuing strategies to address those, so that we have a strong economy moving forward. The intent of this economic development plan, which is why the Master Plan Committee is here and we're working so hard on it, is to then incorporate the Economic Development Strategic Plan into the overall master plan as one of the chapters of the economic, excuse me, of the master plan. There's a whole chapter just dedicated to economic development. So we're grateful that we had the resources to do this because it's a major undertaking. We hired Dan Hodge, who's a consultant from Hodge Consulting, Economic Consulting, and he's here this evening to just present an overview. You all have a copy of his presentation, so some of the slides are very detailed, but just in general, wanted to give you the overview of what we found. We've had a number of community meetings, many, many public participation opportunities and participation through interviews, I should say, too. And Mr. Hodge is going to present, and then when he's done, if you'd like, we can entertain any questions.
Thank you. Please.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. Great to be here at, as we are completing this economic development plan. Today, I'm going to go pretty quickly, so as Julie said, you've got the materials, I think, both the presentation and the plan, which is now up online for people to view as well. So going to talk a little bit about the major components and purpose, give you a little glimpse of the data-driven profile that we did of Auburn, some of the key findings. We also did a lot of outreach to stakeholders, a lot of interviews. We also did a public hearing over the winter to gain input on this plan. And then we put together a recommended set of economic development strategies, policies, and actions, so going to go through that and some of the next steps that we see as part of this plan, how we try to implement and make it be an actionable plan. So trying to look forward here, planning is often about looking forward, right? So what are the economic development goals for business growth and expansion here in Auburn? Analyze some priority development areas. Whenever you're talking economic development at the municipal level, it also comes back to land use and actual sites and areas of town where businesses either are today or could locate in the future. We did a pretty thorough SWAT analysis, and like I said, we're trying to make this something that is, that the town can implement and feeds into the broader comprehensive master plan and process, zoning reforms, and other elements of what the town is working to accomplish. Just some quick data for you here, I don't want to overwhelm, but some key metrics. Unemployment rates for Auburn, I tracked this over the last 15, 16 years. It's actually kind of amazing how close Auburn tracks to both the Worcester County and statewide unemployment rates. Unemployment is now quite low, both here and Auburn. Unemployment is now quite low, both here in Auburn and statewide. You see a pretty steady recovery since the 2009 recession, where it peaked both here and nationally. Looking at socioeconomic data for Auburn's residents, and we identified some comparison towns to place this data in context. So Auburn has about 16,500, a little bit over that population. The median household income, almost 73,000. It's a little bit above the statewide average there. The percentage of bachelor degree holders, that's often a key metric when looking at the sort of economic vibrancy of a place, is if you see a lot of people with education that often corresponds with higher wages and a talented workforce. Poverty rate, very, very low here in Auburn, as well as most of the surrounding towns. Median age, that was one data indicator that I pulled. Auburn does have a relatively higher median age. Aging population is a nationwide trend, but it's certainly something that Auburn is dealing with as well. I didn't go into great depth on this, but one of the recommendations is to look into diversifying housing options. There is a separate housing effort, which I think Julie could talk about. And so again, I won't go into great depth, but one of the things that came up in interviews quite a bit was both for, you know, millennials and condos and apartments, finding more housing options on that end, but also potentially some single-family houses, larger-scale development as well came up quite a few times. Looking at the industry mix, so this is the actual businesses located in Auburn. The previous data was about the residents. What stands out right away on these blue bars is retail trade, which is a very large share, about 25%, so about a quarter of all jobs in Auburn in retail trade. That's, you know, the mall is a big one of those, but there's a lot of others. I did, just to remind myself, a driving tour again before this meeting, and there's a big variety of retail operations throughout the town. The other one, wholesale trade. Auburn is, has a strong cluster of distribution and warehousing-type companies, so those are a couple of key concentrations. Education and healthcare services, that's relatively low in Auburn, and that's largely because Auburn does not have a major hospital or a major private college or university. Worcester County does, the state does. I don't think it's a weakness, it's just sort of the reality of a town, you know, this size. And on the plus side, there's a lot of assets all around you. When we look at trends, what jumps out again is retail trade, which fell quite a bit from 2001 to 2009. So that is definitely an industry that is large in the town, but I think if you look both at this trend and also everything else that's happening nationally with the retail trade industry, it is an industry under some threat, whether it be people shopping at Amazon or the challenges of malls today. You know, you're fortunate to have a mall with basically full occupancy, but there's story after story of suburban malls that are gradually having to, you know, transition in some, in some way. Manufacturing went down a little bit. That's similar to most of the rest of the state. Some growth in education and healthcare and some other sectors. Looking at commuting patterns, so it's kind of interesting. Auburn has less than 1,000 people that both work and live in the town. That's this 872 number. Then you have almost 9,000 who are coming into the town every day to work, and slightly less than that that are going out of the town to work. So this is one indicator where, like, if you were a true just bedroom community, you would have many more people, you know, leaving than you have coming in. But you actually have more coming into jobs than are going out, which is one sign of the importance of the business base here in Auburn. So here's some additional data, a lot of numbers. I'm going to try to point you to a couple of things. So about 10,500 jobs in the town. The jobs-to-population ratio, that's a measure of, you know, how much business activity do you have compared to the size of the population. And at 0.64, that's actually quite high. The statewide average is 0.5. So again, another kind of indication of the business activity that's within Auburn. On the far right, that's the percentage of your property taxes that come from commercial and industrial properties, almost 36%. That's the highest of all those towns there. It may not, you know, with zero context, 36% might not sound that high, but it's actually quite high and shows how important, again, that business base is to your fiscal resources here in town. Commercial-industrial tax rate at 23.2. It's lower than Worcester, it's lower than Hudson, but it's above a number of those other towns. I'm going to keep us going here. I have some housing data, too, but in the interest of time, I'm going to try to move along. I did, as I mentioned, interview a number of local regional stakeholders. Universal acknowledgement of Auburn's highway access and internal roadways as an asset. Many felt that the town has become more responsive to business needs and opportunities over the last five years or so. I think that's a very positive for the town. Perception and reputation mean a lot when it comes to economic development. The split tax rate was noted by many, but a feeling that it's getting better with some narrowing of the gap between the business and residential taxes. And then one thing that also came up was the lack of walkability and not having a true town center. So Auburn, you know, I know that there's the Drury Square Initiative, and I'm going to talk some more about that, but if you were from outside the town, you would be probably hard-pressed to find a clear identifiable town center. Again, the fiscal resources is a strength, a lot of praise for the local schools, parks, and services. We heard a lot about some of those services just a minute ago with the police and fire. Auburn Mall as an asset for the town, but some uncertainty in the future for sure. Availability of land for redevelopment, I'd say there certainly are still parcels available. Some of the bigger sites are not what I would call market-ready necessarily. They are like a wooded site or, so there's some work there in terms of some of the redevelopment options. And then our last one there, ideal location for warehousing and distribution centers, that came up a couple of times, that with the location at the Mass Pike in 290 and the location in Central Mass, just how ideal Auburn is for distribution activity. So on the economic development strategies, I organized this in four buckets or categories. The first is economic development policies and zoning. Then we spent a lot of time trying to identify priority development areas within the town. We identified also some target industries that the town can focus on moving forward. And then economic development, delivery, and implementation. So all of this is good in theory, but to make it happen, you need what we call delivery and implementation. So some of the policies and zoning, and of course, there's more detail in the full report, but trying to ensure that the zoning bylaws are updated to match the economic opportunities for today and tomorrow. In particular, trying to make the zoning as clear as possible with appropriate flexibility. There's a sort of anecdote in there about how there's an industrial park designation, there's an industrial district, there's a general industry, there's a business. So to an outsider, that can easily seem potentially confusing. They may have been set up for very good reasons at the time, but clarity is really important in development. Gaining certification as a bio-ready community, life sciences is a very key industry for the state overall. Being certified as a bio-ready community is one step towards trying to bring some of that economic activity here. Streamlining the permitting process, so trying to implement online electronic permitting and finding ways to expedite zoning board review decisions. Everything that can be done to make it sort of quicker to market is part of what, you know, businesses and developers will see as a good place to work and do business. Advocating for more efficient TIF approval process. What this means is that if you're a city and you want to do some sort of TIF, usually some kind of property tax exemption over some period of time, you can put that forward to your city council. They vote on it, and you can get that approval done fairly quickly. Towns have to go through town meeting, and so it tends to be a slower process. One idea is to try to change those rules so that the Board of Selectmen can be the body that can approve or review those TIF proposals. So just in the interest of time, this is a map here of some of the priority development areas that we identified. In the middle is Drury Square and the Auburn Mall. A lot of emphasis there. I'm guessing most people here know that there was a visioning process done on Drury Square, looking forward at what that could be. Also identified a couple of major industrial areas, including where the existing industrial park is, but then also the Milbury Street industrial area, which I drove through earlier and is very, very active. Trying to identify some places where you could have modern office buildings with strong amenities. One possibility is the former Lowe's site, which is identified here as well. So trying to be kind of proactive about saying, here's the places where we both have or would like development. I also want to point out the highway business corridors. That's this, basically Route 20 and Route 12, which is clearly an active business site. So in terms of target industries, these are the four that we identified. Probably not surprising, distribution and warehousing is one, one of the big things that I think Auburn can do, and I just had a meeting with the Regional Chamber about this, is ways that Auburn can better promote some of its sites that are available. You know, you need visibility, not just, you know, driving by, but you need visibility online. And not everybody's going to start their search in Auburn. They'll probably start at the region level and then zoom in from there in a lot of cases. Professional office, we talked about that a little bit. Hotel and convention space, I guess in particular, especially since the former Yankee drummer closed, no true meeting space in the town. And then local retail and restaurants. I mean, one of the things that came out at the public hearing and a number of sessions was the interest in having more locally-owned, unique shops and restaurants. And I think that that was something that was voiced, and not just, I mean, by all, I guess I would say, is a strong interest there. And the Drury Square area is certainly one place that that could be concentrated. Economic development, delivery, and implementation. So dedicating some additional resources from the town focused on economic development. You know, and to cut to the chase on that, I mean, we have a town manager with a great background in economic development, and we have a planner. But the business base is really important to Auburn, and without anybody waking up every day saying, how can I improve the economic development opportunities in this town? You know, I think that there are lost opportunities without that kind of resource potentially. Developing new marketing materials to communicate the town's assets and vision, supporting the potential for local neighborhood business associations, and working with regional leaders to better market and promote key development sites. So in terms of next steps, and sorry if this feels like I'm rushing, or maybe it feels like it's long, I'm not sure, but we want to integrate this economic development plan with the zoning bylaw review and the master plan process. Ideally, identify and reserve budget resources for a dedicated economic development position. Recommending adopting that map of priority development areas and advancing work with different property owners to help position some of those sites for redevelopment. Briefing state and regional economic development leaders on this economic development plan. If you want to be on the map for economic development, you need to get the word out. And that's, and you now have some of the tools to do that. And having gone through this planning process, it helps to have something, you know, tangible that you can really point to, you know, to kind of make your case, I guess is where I'm going. And then working with the town leadership to continue to improve the economic development policies and processes within the town. So, okay, that's the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you, can you join us up here, Dan? In case we do have any questions. And I'll turn it over to you. And if there's any questions?
I guess I'll, the committee, are there any questions on...
Okay. Is anybody from the Board of Selectmen? Mr. Carpenter.
Let's have two, Mr. Chairman. One is, we always hear about permits taking too long. Is there any sort of data? Does the chamber track it? Does the state track it to see what an average time is for a community, for staff and board permits?
So not tracked by the chamber. The resource that I've seen that does the best job with that is that there's something called the Economic Development Self-Assessment Tool. It's kind of a mouthful. It's something that was developed by Northeastern. And that tool, it's a series of like literally a few hundred questions on the economic development conditions of the town. And one of the things that it asks a series of questions about is how long it takes for different kinds of permitting. So whether it's simply establishing a business or getting, you know, building inspection type of, or building plan permits. And because that tool has been used in cities and towns throughout Massachusetts and beyond, you can then compare how your town does to others. That is the only tool that I've seen that, you know, where you could do that. So that's, it's actually, as those kinds of tools go, it's relatively affordable, but it certainly isn't, it's not something that's just readily available.
My second question, is there any guideline about how many zoning districts are desirable? We hear that there's too many zoning districts. They're confusing, they're small, they don't really perhaps fit today's environment. So is there any sort of data on that?
So I am not a zoning expert, but everything that I know from economic development and whether it's having looked at studies on, you know, when businesses are choosing where to locate or expand, you want clarity and you want time to market. So, you know, for clarity, you want clarity on, you know, your zoning so that it's as easy and as transparent as can be. You know, and then the time to market is that, you know, companies, most of them are not looking to, you know, spend nine to 18 months to develop a site. They're looking for sites that are, you know, closer to ready to go. Like maybe the land is cleared, the pad is ready, and they need to build. If you look at the success of a place like Devens near 495, or down in Taunton, the Miles Standish Industrial Park, those are places that have put a lot of emphasis on, over time, developing areas that could be developed and kind of ready to go in kind of a clear way.
Thank you.
Mr. Currie, is there any data on how much people that utilize restaurants and hotels and things like that, that are going into events in Worcester or events in Sturbridge or, you know, are we drawing as many as we can to feed those towns? Is there any economic data on that?
I have not seen data along those lines. I mean, that's the kind of thing that, you know, you... I mean, that's the kind of thing that, you know, you could attempt some surveys of, or work with your local chamber to, you know, ask some questions about, you know, the shopping and dining and entertainment kind of activities of, you know, visitors and patrons. So, no, I've not, I've not seen that. I mean, you know, I guess the two things anecdotally I would say are, you know, given the location of Auburn with the highways and its highway business corridors, you certainly attract a decent amount of people coming in and, you know, using facilities along the way, perhaps to go somewhere else. But at the same time, in interviews, I heard multiple times people talk about, well, if we want to go out to dinner, we'll go to like Shrewsbury Street in Worcester, or some other location, and that was where, you know, people seemed, pardon the pun, hungry for, you know, other restaurant options.
Through the chair, I'd just add to that question, as Mr. Hodg said, there's no data on that right now, but I am on the Board of the Destination of Central Mass, and they're starting to collect that data for Worcester Hotels to start with, and then they're going to be moving out, and they have told me that Auburn Hotels take a lot of the clientele that they have for all of the college graduations in the region, for a lot of the festivals, the fairs, and the events that take place all over the region, a lot of that overflow comes to Auburn, and as a matter of fact, it's not overflow. Even the DCU Center, when they look to book events at the DCU Center, they count Auburn's hotel rooms as those that are available in the immediate region. So I've asked them if possible, once they finish their data collection on the Worcester Hotels, if we could maybe expand that out and look at other hotels in the region, including Auburn, to try to get that data, because it would be nice to have, but it's not that specific yet.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
So in reading through the entire plan, a couple of things stood out to me that, I think there's a lot of great ambitious things in here, and I think you read through this and you say, wow, this is a wonderful town to live in, but I think my question would be, where do you start with all of this? I think you can't just obviously bite off everything, and there's something where I think, looking at things that you felt were possibly roadblocks, I'm just curious where you figure we would start.
Well, so I guess if you go to flip to the very end, and the section on next steps is probably where I would start. You know, I would say, and I probably sound like a broken record here, that, you know, Auburn has a fairly unique mix of both residential assets and business assets, and probably most towns the size of Auburn with the population of Auburn don't have an economic development planner, but your business base is big enough to have an economic development planner. And so I think, you know, to actually implement a lot of these things, you know, having somebody whose job is to focus on this kind of work, I do think is an important place, you know, to start. On a very practical level, as I think I alluded, I actually had a chance to meet earlier this afternoon with some folks from the Worcester Regional Chamber. If you go on their website, and it's called the Worcester Regional Chamber, it is very Worcester-focused, what they currently have in terms of development sites and opportunities. Auburn has the chance to better promote its sites and be part of that as well, there's no reason that it can't. And so those are a couple of very practical things. I do think also that with the zoning efforts that are going on, and, you know, our effort in this project to, you know, identify development areas, to highlight those, and if somebody's saying, well, you know, where can we locate X, then you can point to the map and you can say, well, here or here. And it's not kind of wishy-washy, it's not, well, I hope somebody might think that's a good idea. It's, no, we as a town, you know, these are areas that we have identified for, you know, for this kind of development, and so, you know, I think those are a couple of, you know, tangible things to do. I think the longer run opportunities and challenges for the town relate to things like Drury Square and the mall. I think now's the time to start kind of planning and positioning for that, but that's, you know, probably evolve over a number of years, I would guess.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned about being bio-ready certified and stuff, what does that really mean for the community? What does it have to do with it, for get rid of more for life sciences?
Yeah, so Mass Bio is a nonprofit kind of biotech life science organization for Massachusetts, and if you look on their website, out of about 350 cities and towns in Massachusetts, probably, you know, 15, 20% of them would be my guess, have some kind of bio-ready status. A lot of the smaller towns in the western part of the state do not, but like all around Boston, they do, around Worcester, southeastern Mass. So it's a signal, you know, that the town is open for business, and that could be for, you know, bio-manufacturing, and by the way, most of this stuff is not like, you know, scary, you know, bio-hazardous. I'm not, again, like a scientist here, but most of the kind of bio-manufacturing opportunities are, you know, not like, it's not like what you might have heard at BU a while back, where they had to, they were going through a process that was kind of, you know, got the community very upset. This is mostly about being able to identify different sites, having some different processes in line. Matt Benoit, who's the town planner, has applied based on the existing conditions in the state. Are we still waiting to hear back? We're still waiting to hear back, so I think we need to follow up on that one, and there's different levels and, you know, sort of take it one step at a time.
Yes?
Yeah, so one of the things that's always struck me about Auburn is the lack of professional office space. Given the highway access that we have here, it seems like it would be an ideal sort of regional commuting location. Did you come across anything that would indicate what's maybe restricting that growth here, or why people are choosing not to develop those? Is it just a lack of proper sites for that? Is it some bylaw, some zoning restrictions that we may have, or any, or combination of those sorts of things? Because it just seems to me like, given the access and people driving, you know, I commute 55 miles to Burlington every day, it just seems like that a reverse commute would be very appealing to a lot of people, and you'd be able to attract a lot of, you know, good employees.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's possible that there's some zoning things that could be improved, but I don't think that is, I think that's probably number 10 out of, you know, nine factors that precede it. I think that when it comes to professional office space, the driving professional office market is Boston and to 495, and there is still a challenge in terms of scale of professional office space pushing beyond 495. Now that said, like if you look at the success of a place like Westboro, and I didn't talk about it, but they have, you know, a quite amazing, you know, business base in what is otherwise a very residential, you know, town, and like Auburn, they have great highway access with both the Pike and 495, you have the Pike and 290, you know, so I think simply being a little further west is probably the biggest thing that hurts a scale of that You know, what we recommended there with the priority, some of the priority development areas, is that to start attracting, you know, more, whether they are tech companies or engineering companies, or you name it, being able to improve the office offerings. So if you look at Westboro and Marlboro and some of those places, those office offerings are, tend to be modern, Class A or Class AB space, and they have high amenities with like cafes and gyms, and so like the office offerings that Auburn has today don't quite meet some of those standards. The question I think is like, how do you, you know, can, can some property owners or new developers see that as an opportunity, especially with the highway access that you have? And I think, you know, this plan to me is a jumping off point to start having some of those conversations.
Mr. Bertham. Right along that same line, you know, when we were talking about Westboro, and, you know, I understand like the Flanders Road area and all of that being quite a bit of business office space, you know, I'm looking at their tax rate at 18.59 commercial and our tax rate being 23.26. How much do you feel we're being affected and maybe not bringing office space or retail space, you know, commercial space, industrial space, in because of the tax rate? I mean, we are the third highest on the list that you showed.
Yeah, so the plan recommends trying to further lower the commercial industrial tax rate, because I think it is a competitive disadvantage. It is hard to say quantitatively, you know, how large that is, or how many opportunities are lost, but in economic development, it's all about having, you know, as many sort of tools or positives to offer up a company, and if you can offer up, you know, a competitive property tax rate that's, you know, no higher than some of these towns that they might be thinking of otherwise, then that's just one more advantage for you. So the plan recommended trying to set something like a goal of within five years, say, trying to work towards a single rate. Now, I don't, I don't know how, you know, the leadership and how the policy will evolve over time, but, you know, being able to lay out a, you know, a continued effort along those lines, I think would be viewed very positively for business opportunities.
If I could, through the chair, a follow-up to that is, you know, the thing that we're struggling with is, in another one of your charts, you know, we have a higher average rate of aged people here in Auburn, and so it's a constant struggle for us, because we obviously want to keep as many people in their house for as long as they want to and can stay in their housing. So when I ask the question, I'm by no way baiting for, you know, lower commercial, although I do want it to be recognized that it's, I'm sure, I'm sure something that is, you know, a handicap to us, that we're trying to juggle both of those things constantly here. Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to thank the Master Plan Review Committee for being here. You guys have taken on a huge job, and generally a thankless job. You're not, I don't even think people know you're doing it, so thank you for the work that you've done to date. Many of us on the Board had the opportunity to attend that public hearing and had some input, so I do have just a couple, just two questions, similar to the one that came from this Board. Next steps and some timeline, if we know what the timeline involved in implementing some of this stuff. And the second question, and I don't think it can be answered tonight, but just to throw it out to other Boards and the town manager, are there any policies that this Board can adopt in assisting the implementation of some of these things? Sometimes it may be a simple policy that we have, or a licensed procedure or something. So if there's something that this Board needs to look at, then maybe we should be doing that. So, either to the town manager or our consultant.
Well, I'll start, and then I'll let Julie chime in as well, or help finish the answer. You know, I did not lay out a, you know, very specific timeline as part of this plan. You know, it's a 10-year economic development plan, which, you know, in light of your question, suddenly feels really long, but there certainly are some things that can happen within the, you know, the next six months and within the next year. So, you know, for example, you know, under Julie's leadership, we're starting to move forward on developing some new economic development marketing materials for the town. You know, I'd say you've done really well without a lot of proactive work so far, but, you know, my observation would be, without some proactive work, you're at risk of having erosion of your business base, and if you have erosion of your business base, that's going to hurt everything else, including, you know, how you have tax rates for the residents. So being able to do some more proactive economic development, I think, is important for the town, and like I said, it may feel a little bit outside the box for, you know, for a town of less than 20,000, but again, given both the importance and the scale of the business activity, I think it's fully appropriate. Julie, do you want to talk about the timing, potential timing of an economic development position, or, I guess the other one would be the online permitting, I guess it'd be?
Right, for the online permitting, we have applied for an IT grant through the state to set up an online permitting with three components. For the business permitting part of it, for the building inspections part of it would be one, the other would be health, and the third one would be animal control. Depending on what kind of grant activity we get, if we get any funding from the state, our priority, if we don't get the full amount, our priority would be to go for the building permit module first. And then, Ed and I have been talking about how we may be able to come back in the fall at the town meeting and supplement and ask for a vote to supplement that, those modules that we didn't get, because it is important to have that online permitting. As far as an economic development position, Dan, as under our economic development grant, we amended the contract to include two pieces. One, to help us develop a job description and a salary range, looking at other communities on what they do, and the second is to put together some marketing materials for us for economic development. Both of those pieces are going to take place over the next couple of months. We would probably be making a recommendation for the FY '19 budget, since '18 is already in place. We want to make sure we've done the research, we know what type of position it is we're recommending, and then come back in the fall.
Okay. Does anybody got anything else? Yes?
So just to kind of follow up on the office space, I'm also someone who lives in Auburn and owns a business, and my business is not here. I commute out of the city, out of this town every day to go to my own business that I own that is in another town. One, because of lack of office space, and I think you couldn't be any more on point with the, sort of the modern space itself, gyms, Starbucks, that's what people want. So I think having somebody that has a full-time position that can help. There are certainly areas, the Lowe's area would be an unbelievable spot for office space, so if that's something that would fall under the umbrella of a full-time person who worked for the town to help promote growth, I think we definitely would see a group. I know Joe is another member of the Board who also owns a business that commutes out of here, and he looked, he tried to get a space in Auburn, and he just couldn't find something. I'm sure there's other people out there that feel the same. The other thing I wanted to just mention is, can you just speak a little bit about the mall? As someone who is an Amazon Prime member and probably hasn't stepped foot in the mall in 10 years, that makes me nervous.
So like at the public hearing we had over the winter, the Auburn Mall came up, you know, quite a bit. I guess I haven't been following every detail, but I understand that there is a new medical office user going into the mall, which I think is the current trend of the malls in a lot of cases, which is diversifying the kinds of activities at the mall. So for example, and I just happen to be working in this city at the same time, is down in Taunton, they have a mall called the Silver City Galleria. They have a community college, Bristol Community College, that recently located and has a presence there now. So a different type of example of a non, kind of what you would think of as mall user that's going into a mall. So I think... So I think, you know, on the one hand, the mall is doing great with what it kind of has, and as I understand, has full occupancy. But I also know that like the amount of employment and foot traffic at the mall is not what it was 10, 15, 20 years ago. And I mean, I am not a retail industry expert, per se, but you can't help but see the stories all across New England and the U.S. of the challenges of, you know, malls. And, you know, we only have to look next door to Worcester to see how big you can have a mall redevelopment project. That's probably the biggest one in the whole state, where the city square project in downtown Worcester used to be a mall. And so, you know, I think the town being open and flexible and working with the property owner and abiding properties about how to, you know, creatively, you know, reuse that property over time and perhaps in the future, there's residential development. If you're going to do the Drew Square, you know, effort over time, you know, you're going to want some people living in that area. So whether that's at the mall itself or nearby, providing better access to Auburn Pond, which is right there as an amenity, was something that we mentioned in the plan as well. So there's a few ideas in the plan in terms of what, you know, kind of could happen over time. I, you know, I don't want to be too negative because I do think there's a lot of positives still today, but it's hard not to look into the future and sort of wonder where it may go.
Okay, go ahead.
I did just want to make one further comment since Mr. Carpenter brought up the zoning previous, is that today Auburn zoning would not allow a lot of the flexible uses at the mall site that have been discussed here today. So that is one of the reasons that the zoning bylaw review committee is looking at that and the master plan committee as well is looking at some of those items to sort of look forward on development areas like that or on Drew Square to make sure that, you know, maybe the town can adjust some zoning to make that more flexible. So that is an area that we are looking.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? I just had one quick little comment because we had a town meeting last week and the proposal for an electronic signboard was defeated. How much effect is that on, say, the mall and any kind of economic development plan? I mean, you have advertising there, throwing it out there, let people see what's going on. Is that something we should be looking forward to or looking more into?
So you'd really have to, I apologize, but you'd probably have to talk directly with the mall about how that affects them, I guess. You know, to me, it highlights the need, maybe broader need in terms of communication about, you know, the importance of the kind of economic base of Auburn. It's, yeah, well, I don't want to make a broader societal comment here except to say that the business base is very important to Auburn and maybe there's ways to further promote that.
Well, just with the plans we have in front of us tonight and your presentation, you've really done your homework. You've gone above and beyond and you've had the input of the, some of the residents. And I think you've done an outstanding job and we look forward to following up on this and see where we go and, well, time-wise, schedule-wise, and, you know, are we actually going to see something right away or is it going to be long-term? So we'd be looking forward to seeing what the outcome is.
Very good. Hopefully some of both.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Is there anybody else?
So on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank Mr. Hodge. I'd also like to thank the members, Vice Chair Mark Imzy, Megan Roche, Andrew Coles, Joe Spann, Carolyn Corvo, and Matthew Benoit. And at this point, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give you comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we can take just like a three-minute and you can move along. So we adjourn for three minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
And it is?
I'd like to move up item C1, request for proclamation for National Lettuce Carrier's Food Drive Day in Auburn.
Okay.
Second. And just under discussion, Mr. LaFlash generally comes in on the public comment and we missed that opportunity. And I know he'll be brief, so rather than waiting through a couple more lengthy hearings, I'd appreciate moving this item up.
Okay. So the motion remains second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Norman, please join us.
This is good. Our Lettuce Carrier Food Drive, you know, we're going, we've been having it, this is actually the 25th year, and the town of Auburn and all of Central Mass has always supported it. It is this Saturday, May 13th. It's an all-day process. Whenever you get your mail, make sure you leave out your non-perishable food items and we take it to food pantries here in Auburn. Last year, we collected over 14,000 pounds in Auburn and over 322,000 pounds in Central Mass. So we always, you know, welcome your support in helping us get the word out about this. And people will get notifications in the mail over this next week. And I want to thank all the residents of town besides you for all the support that they give us in this great endeavor, so.
Well, we thank you for all your efforts and all your time and the postal service for providing this because it's a well worthwhile program. We thank you very much. And we do have a proclamation here for you tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a motion that we approve the proclamation for National Lettuce Carrier's Food Drive Day on May 13th, 2017. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And Ms. Goodrich, would you kindly?
Certainly.
Thank you.
You can have this in the next item, right? Okay. Just making sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norman. Okay, back to our.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the agenda. We have now a license violation hearing for Rockdale Auto, 518 Washington Street in Auburn. We are running a little behind tonight and I apologize for that. I would like to open the hearing.
I'll start. I'm going to hear.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We're going to have all parties that expect to be speaking tonight to come forward and be sworn in. These are the people that are involved in the violation notice. That would be the license holder and owner of the property and not the business managers. I'm going to recognize Mr. LaRusso and your representatives. And as far as the business goes, this is strictly for the landowner and the license holder.
Good evening, Mr. Chin and Selectman.
Yeah, I would like you just to be sworn in.
Attorney Paul Novak. I won't be giving sworn testimony, but I'll be speaking on behalf of Mr. LaRusso. He'll be giving the specific testimony if required.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so all those testifying tonight, would you raise your right hand? Are you, you are not part of the license?
No. He's the owner.
You, he's the owner, he's the license holder and?
They have a DBA on my license from John.
Yes, but I understand that.
They call himself a different name.
I understand that. But you are the owner of the property and you are the holder of the license.
Yes, sir.
And we would like to address these violations with you and you only.
I didn't quite hear you, sir.
We'd like to address these violations with you and you only because you are the license holder and you are the property owner.
Yes.
And anybody outside of that, we have no way that we want to hear any of that, that being outside. I beg your pardon?
I'm kind of hard to hear him, so I'd have to sit up there.
Okay, you're welcome to.
I want to have Hayden, his attorney, come up and get sworn in.
Okay. I'd like to swear you all in. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And you will be?
I'm only speaking on his behalf, so I'm not sworn. I'm as an advocate, I don't get sworn in as an attorney.
Okay. And Caleb? You tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but it?
I will.
Thank you. Okay. First off, what I'd like to do is before we get into this, I'd like to hear from our, hang on just a second.
Building Commissioner Caleb Moody.
Yes, the building commissioner, Caleb Moody.
Do you want to, while he's coming up to you, just make sure that they receive the notification?
Thank you. Now, you've received all the notifications from the town and this was dated back on April 25th, 2017. And this is the, the hearing tonight is for May 8th, which is tonight, and so you've been properly notified.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. First off, I'd like to hear from our building commissioner, Caleb Moody. Oh, there he is. Thank you. I was looking around and it says, so Caleb, would you please?
So back in January, we were here for the license renewal. And at the time, there were violations, ongoing violations, and the board had asked me to keep a close eye on the business to see what was going on. We have been doing that. It was corrected for some time, but since the beginning of April, I think it started April 14th until the last pictures. I took some pictures on Friday, made copies of the board. The parking is still not per the approved plan. They're parking on untaped services, probably within the 100-foot buffer zone that's located on the property. I wrote tickets on two separate occasions for cars in excess of the license, number on the license, and that still hasn't been corrected to date.
Okay.
But basically the same, same scenario as last time we were here.
Okay, so there's nothing further other than what the documents you've given us, provided us for us tonight?
Correct.
I'll ask Mr. LaRusso or whoever is speaking, have you got any questions for Mr. Moody?
I would just like to preference this on, sole reason we're here this evening with Mr. LaRusso is I think we've let the town know, the manager and Mr. Moody with respect to, we are in court right now on a commercial eviction on behalf of the tenant, and we have a hearing scheduled for this Thursday morning. We have had those papers filed for some time now, and we understand the town's concern. And basically, we are going to, you know, have a hearing, it's scheduled. It was postponed because of discovery. We were supposed to be in earlier, actually, in April, and it was postponed as a result of discovery. The concern here this evening is it's not Mr. LaRusso who's responsible because he's done everything he can. He's proceeding with civil litigation in order to have the tenant relocated to wherever the tenant decides to go. Mr. LaRusso has been at this property, I think, since 1999. He's never had any violations personally against him. This is a particular tenant, and it was our understanding that this board was going to transfer a license, and that came up and the transfer was not done. The board had concerns and they did not transfer the license. It's Mr. LaRusso's position this evening is that although there's violations here and the previous violations cited were directly cited to the tenant who in fact paid, we do have correspondence and documentation from Mr. Moody, which indicates that he previously ticketed him back in 2016, some time ago, on a multitude of issues. All those tickets were in fact paid by the responsible party who's in violation here. With respect to the license itself, Mr. LaRusso, it is business-owned property. His intent would be to have this license, whether it would be with some other party or whatever, but it is a car lot, it is in a business zone location. And if, if for some reason, you know, this tenant is no longer there, he has a proprietary property interest with respect to the interest in the license itself. I can tell you that, you know, we do have that hearing and there's multiple grounds cited. We're not going to disagree with what was cited there. I think there's multiple photographs that are in the file. We're not going to contest that there are violations on that property with respect to that.
Just to back up a little bit and save a little bit of time, Mr. LaRusso approached us at our last meeting, one of the last meetings requesting that, saying that you were going to be going to court on just what you had mentioned about the tenants. We have no interest in that, and that's why we didn't want to hold that and delay it any longer, that we wanted to get this corrected because he is the landowner and he is the license holder, and so he is ultimately responsible. And that's why we are here tonight to see if we can't come to some sort of a agreement to discuss this, make sure we get this done right.
Right. Now, I understand the town's concerns, and I think with that said, I think we're going to have to let the board ask because there is a civil, there's another suit that's been filed against Mr. LaRusso since we commenced the commercial eviction. We are in Superior Court now on another matter, so we really don't want to take a position other than what the board has to do on its own evidence here, that Mr. LaRusso does not want to make a decision because of this other litigation that's been filed against him by the tenant's attorney.
Again, that's above and beyond anything that the town has anything to do with.
We just want to bring that to your opinion. So, you know, we're here as, as an owner of the property, but we would rather have the board take, make an independent determination and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Mr. Moody, have you got anything else you want to add to?
I do not.
Okay. Any board members have anything? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my first question through the chairman is to Mr. Moody. I understand that we're here addressing just strictly the license holder and the issues there. So my question is, the third party, Ms. Yarber, was addressed in some of these letters. I'm just curious as to why they would be sent to her and we wouldn't hear from, from her tonight regarding this violation.
So one of the major issues with this is nobody's ever responsible when something goes wrong. So, so when I go to the site, nobody's in charge, nobody's responsible, they're pushing it to, they're handing it off to somebody else. So that's the last known manager of the business that I had, so I ticketed her as well as the property owner. Because no one's being real clear about who's in charge on site.
And if I may continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So, so I'm thinking back at our last hearing, and my recollection is that the, the property owner had told us that he would, the operation was in his name and he would be taking over the operation until the license expired or he has another tenant. So my, my question or something I would need to understand further is, I understand you're in the process of an eviction process, but if the license holders are not, if the license holder is not authorized, if we revoke the license, isn't the tenant issue a non-issue because they don't have a license to operate at that facility?
I wouldn't know the legality on that. I would, I would say that I know there is a, two pending cases, one in Worcester Central District Court with regards to the commercial eviction, and Mr. LaRusso has also been named in a Worcester Superior Court action with regards to a proprietary or a property interest. So at this point, I wouldn't have an opinion on that specific question.
So just to follow up on that, Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Moody, so, so procedurally, if Mr. LaRusso were to lose his license tonight, there would be no sales allowed? And how would we, what would be in the enforcement of that?
I think we'd have to move forward with discussions with town council and Auburn PD on how to shut the operation down because it's unlicensed.
Okay. And may I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Through the chairman, to the license holder. Clearly, the tenants are here, there's, there's conflict with the tenants and the property owner. If you're able to tell us tonight, is it your intention to lease this property if we are to revoke your license?
I'm not going to lease it with the license. At this point, I would say that he doesn't have any specific set of plans other than defending against these two courses of action. I should say. I should say proceeding against the commercial eviction in a timely fashion and defending against the Superior Court action. That's all he's doing. He's not looking across that bridge when he gets to it, but at this point, he doesn't have possession of that property. So we have to see through the court process on both of these matters.
Okay, so he does not have possession of that property now?
No.
You're telling me that, that he does not own that property?
He... No, I said possession. He has ownership, but it's being possessed by the tenant.
I understand. Just to be sure, we clarified that, that's all. I guess, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Moody, how often have you had to visit the site in the last six months?
Too often. I drive by it every day, so I look at it to see what's going on. There are hiding cars in the back on a daily basis. I don't have the time to stop every day. I don't have the time to write tickets every day. One of the remarks I got when I stopped was, "Don't you have anything better to do?" And I said, "Yes, I absolutely do." I don't want to stop and write tickets every day. I can't. It's just, there's not enough time in the day. But I've been there probably 10 times in the last six months, either myself or another inspector.
Again, just as a follow-up, other car dealerships in town, how does... You've visited this 10 times. How often have you visited the other multitude of car dealerships we have? And to what extent have they violated or not violated?
Most of them are receptive, and it just takes a phone call if there's a car on the grass, or I drove by another dealership and there was a car on the grass. I stopped. It was moved within five minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess, Mr. Moody, has there been any attempt to correct any of the violation notices that you've administered?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else got anything else? Okay. Mr. Berthew?
Clarification. So are we looking at trying to collect the monies that are here in the notices, or are we just voting strictly on taking the license?
Well, as far as... We understand, I guess, correct me if... Well, Mr. Moody, I'll let you answer that.
As far as the fines are concerned, there's an appeal process, which they can start through the courts, so that really wouldn't be handled by the Board of Selectmen. There's a civil appeal process that they can follow.
Okay. Got anything else? Okay, I'll turn it back over to you. Have you got any questions? Have you got any other comments, concerns that...
Whatever action this board takes, I just would indicate that on behalf of him as an owner, that we would, if in fact this matter is resolved, if and when, it's a question of when, that we would reserve the right to come back in before the board in the event that he secures another tenant.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one more question for Mr. Moody before we moved on. How many vehicles are allowed at this per-site plan approval? How many vehicles are allowed, and how many are they averaging?
They're allowed 13 retail or inventory vehicles. There's been anywhere from 18 to 24 on site.
Have you got a follow-up to that?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carpenter?
Just because you raised a legal point through the chair, through the town manager, Mr. Moody. What are their rights? If we revoke it today, what is the process for them to reclaim it, for lack of a better description? Or is there a cooling-off period? Is there a delay? Is there any sort of consequence to us revoking it to the landowner?
I don't believe there's any appeal process to the Board of Select, the licensing authority's decision, or a waiting period for that matter, that I'm aware of.
I'm just worried, we revoke it, and he wants to come in, he wants to use his property. My concern is, what is that process? He can just come in and apply? Not a problem?
I guess my concern with him coming back and applying for another license is getting into the same situation where the property owner holds a license, and we have another third party operating on site. I would rather... I don't want to keep him from renting his property, but the person operating the business should be the licensed individual. Otherwise, there's really no teeth for anything.
So there's no barrier to us issuing a new license?
Okay. Anybody got anything else? And through this, have you got anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman. Nothing. All set, thank you.
And Caleb, you're all set?
I am, thank you.
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
So if the board went through the chairman to Mr. Caleb, if the board were to revoke this license tonight, and I understand the vehicles are still on there, would you... I know you just said that it would be a process involving the police department. Would it be your intent to continue sending violations? Or would you consider the revocation of the license the process in moving forward to resolving this?
I think revoking the license is a start, but we would have to talk to Town Council about how we can get that operation stopped where there's no license anymore, and what our next step should be.
Okay, thank you.
And these fines are directly to Mr. LaRusso. These fines have to be paid by Mr. LaRusso, correct?
I would say so.
Thank you.
For the information pertaining to that question, we do have it on appeal to, as a separate case that we have appealed it to, Worcester District Court, based on the civil litigation that's already pending against the tenant. So we have appeal to fines.
Okay, that's above and beyond, but I do understand that, thank you. Does anybody got anything else? Mr. Moody?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. LaRusso, have you got anything further?
The only thing I can say is, I could not control them, as he couldn't. They wouldn't listen. They would actually ridicule me.
Okay, but as the license holder and the property owner, then you had the ultimate responsibility to take care of that, so...
I understand that.
But thank you.
I would just say you have to do what you have to do.
Okay. Anything else? Being done, we'll close the hearing.
Motion closed.
Second.
All of you favor? Aye. Opposed?
Well, the board has heard testimony from both sides, and it was the wish of the board.
Chairman, do we have a recommendation from either Mr. Moody or Mrs. Jacobson?
I'll direct that to you.
I'm going to ask the building commissioner first, because he has been the one that's been handling this and following the violation process, and then after he speaks, I'll speak.
Okay, thank you.
My recommendation would be, at the very least, a suspension of the license until we can get a new tenant into the property that can be properly licensed by the board.
Through the chair, I would support the recommendation of the building commissioner. I do believe that this has gone on for a very long time. We've gone back and forth several times. We've had different aspects of the licensing and different people who wanted the license, and it is very time-consuming for our building commissioner. You have asked him to track it, and he's done his very best, but it's a daily task to do so. So I think at this point, as Mr. Moody said, if you vote to suspend or vote to revoke without prejudice, where you could... I wouldn't even say without... I would say vote to revoke, and then at a later date with a new tenant, you could have them come back in and reapply. Or, as Caleb said, suspend. I think on either case, you need to stop these operations until this gets under control.
I think that my feeling is, with a suspension, and I don't mean to go across by your recommendation, however, I think that if a suspension comes up, then it's kind of making it linger, waiting to see what happens in court and what happens back and forth. My feeling would be to revoke the license and then get a clean start with a new application at such time that whatever legal issues or whatever property issues come forward, then they can come back clean again, and there will be some restrictions, I'm sure, if there was another application made, but that's for down the road. That would be my feeling, and so I'll put that to the board, and you make your decisions. Mrs. Goodrich?
Mr. Chairman, just before we take this vote, I just want to be clear that the license is in just Mr. LaRusso's name, because I heard something about a DBA, so I just want to be sure that it's in Mr. LaRusso's name only and not a DBA?
That's correct. A DBA is just a certificate issued by the town clerk. I don't think that has anything to do with the license.
That's not designated on the license?
I don't believe it is. The license is issued to Rockdale Auto and Truck, which is Mr. LaRusso's company.
Okay.
Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we have a finding that a violation of statute by law or regulation has occurred.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Again, that's... Have you got that, Sharon?
No, I didn't get it.
Okay, just, can you please repeat that, please?
That I'm making a motion that we have a finding that a violation of a statute by law or regulation has occurred, and I will add, on multiple occasions, over a multi... Several months, we've had enforcement actions taken against the license holder.
And your recommendation is to suspend or revoke?
Well, it's a two-part process, so I was only going to...
Thank you, okay. Thank you. One step ahead of myself here. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Being done, all of you in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, I would make a motion that, at this time, based on the evidence before us, as well as the recommendation of the building commissioner and the town manager, that we revoke this license at this time.
Second.
Motion been made in second for revocation of the license. Is there any further discussion? Being done, all of you in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Moody, would you take note that that license has been revoked, and take whatever actions need to be taken?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in tonight. And now we have, from Scanlon Associates, we have an audit presentation. I know the hour is late, but I apologize for that, but there was business to be taken care of, so... Mr. Kastenov?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to ask Tom to come up. I'd like to introduce you to Tom Scanlon from Scanlon and Associates, who is here tonight to present the findings of the FY 2016 audit.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thanks.
For a period ending 6/30/2016. I am pleased to... I am pleased with the results of the audit, and evident by our continued strong financial commitment to improve our free cash, our undesignated fund balance, our stabilization, as well as other reserves, while continuing to adhere to our adopted financial policies. This positive trend in our financial position on the statements allows us to... It gives us some more flexibility to address an amended free cash policy that we brought before you, that will allow us in the future, depending on annual results, to appropriate money now out of free cash for non-operational expenses, which is a good thing. Also, we embedded a target of our unassigned fund balance at 20% of net general fund operating revenues. We have hit that mark, which allowed us to get an upgrade in our bond rating. We want to maintain that level of percentage at 20% of our unassigned fund balance. If we dip below that, then we won't be able to exercise our option in our free cash policy. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, who can highlight some of the key points of the audit that has been included in your packet tonight.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Doing awesome. I know. I know this is the most exciting part of the night. I plan on being brief anyways. I can't say enough good things about, you know, your financial policies. Like, as stated, your reserves are 22% of your budget, which is just outstanding. I mean, a good sound.
Well, if I may, Mr. Scanlon, it's not just on paper. We've actually seen the process go through, and we're all actually amazed at how well we've done in a short time. We expected the policy to take maybe four or five years, but it's shortened right up, and we're doing very, very well, and we thank you to the administration for this. You guys have done a great job, and the policy has been in place to us. It's been well done, so...
Yeah, if I can confirm that, just on your financial side, you know, well-managed town, from your finance to the management, a very nice town to audit. You know, I just want to go over briefly your financial statements, so these numbers are validated as Moody's, and everyone looks at your bond rating companies on pages 18 This is your general fund, fund balance. If you go general fund unassigned, I just mentioned a few minutes ago. So it's first column, third to last number, you see 12.7 million. That number is a representative of your free cash, which is approximately about 9.4 million, and your stabilization fund is approximately about 2.3 million. Those are those numbers come from in your balance sheet, so you can see they're being validated. That's what your bond rating companies are looking at when they look at this. And on page 19, you see the general fund increased 2.4 million. That is the overall increase in your reserves, which approximate your free cash. Again, this is what the bond rating companies are looking at, and your grant awarding agencies. So in their eyes, it's a very positive look, and you're representative of your financial policies are indicated in your financial statements. And if you turn to page 22, this is how you kind of fare with your budget versus actual. This is what's generating your free cash. You can see the overall net result, bottom right-hand corner is 2.2 million. That's approximately what your free cash went up. You didn't use any fund balance to do it. Fiscally, you're 16, which is good, so that got you to that above the 20% mark. Outside of that, you do have a couple other reserves. You have a capital improvement trust that you have, which is about 1.4 million, and then you have a pension reserve trust, which is about 1.5 million. Again, those aren't counted in the 20%. So your reserves are working. You did significantly fund your OPEB trust, you know, about 2.2 million at June 30, 2016, which is great. You're probably one of the few towns that can substantially fund it. I would probably recommend going forward, adopting a plan of when you're going to start using that. For instance, because you're in that position to do that, not too many towns are, as they say, "We're going to build it up to 10 to 15 million, and then once it hits that mark, anyone that retires off of that will be then funded by the trust." So I think you're in that position to start adopting a long-term plan for that, when to use it, which I don't get to say that too often to clients. That's kind of the highlight of your financials, unless you have specific questions on that.
Okay, I guess through me, Mr. Kastenovitz. The OPEB, we've really contributed to that greatly, and we've done leaps and bounds. The policies that we have in place is any of that, part of that being invested, so it's growing on its own?
So annually, we built into the operational side of the budget a $500,000 annual contribution. As you know, in the current fiscal year that we're in, we appropriate an additional 100 at a fall town meeting to give us a total of 6. The monies that are feeding the trust are invested, and the money stays within the trust. So that doesn't have to be as liquid as other investments, because we're not utilizing any of that on an annual basis to help fund any expenditures. Given that, we want it to be a safe investment, but that money is staying within the trust. In terms of our annual required contribution based upon the actuarial study, we're probably funding about 20% of what our... funding about 20% of what our annual recommended requirement is, which would be somewhere about 2.5. We're contributing 500,000. So by looking at that, I would argue we're not funding it. We should be funding it more, but we've got to realize that it takes a commitment to do that. That's why we're trying, through our amended financial free cash policy, being able to do additional annual contributions based upon our free cash certification. It is a one-time contribution. It doesn't mean that we're going to maintain that, but it gives us some financial flexibility to accelerate that when we recognize a positive outcome in our free cash. So with that, we're trying to create tools that will allow us to address that in future years. We know this is a long-term plan. We're not going to fund this in the short term. And I think that's why Tom is suggesting that we formulate a long-term plan, not only for feeding it, but for future utilization as well.
Great. Thank you. Just goes to show how proactive the town is, and through your direction, we appreciate all that you've done, because the town is doing very, very well.
Yes. I will confirm that in a very short period of time, which is good. On page 28, it outlines how the trust changed in its investment income. You had beginning of the year balance of 1.6. You contributed 500, and you had investment income of about 73,000. So you're invested in multiple investments with Bartholomew, I think.
Yeah, correct.
So that's good on the financial side. As far as the overall audit goes, you know, we looked this year. You know, we always concentrate in the collector's office and the treasurer's office, you know, going down the bank statement reconciliations. We put emphasis on that, because we consider that high-risk area in all our communities, really internal control, protecting that asset, which is your cash and your investments. We put an emphasis on that, along with balancing out your receivables. So we spend a lot of time in there. Outside of that, we concentrated this year primarily on reimbursable-type grants. You had multiples over the MSBA projects. You had four or five of them in Chapter 90. So we had some recommendations in regard to that, and reconciling those and getting them tightened up to reimbursements, which I know is being addressed or addressed as we speak. So as far as the audit goes, that's areas we did.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody got any comments?
Great job. Good job, Mr. Chairman.
I can see the audience stuck around for the... And I can walk this year, unless you're...
Well, thank you very, very much.
No problem.
Your report, and it just kind of shows the puppet that we are. We're doing well, and thank you to the administration, and like I say, through your direction. Making it happen.
Yeah. If any questions throughout the year, don't state, call the office, any concerns, matters you want to look into. It's what we're here for.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming in today.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
You can let the other communities you work with steal our financial policies, as long as they don't steal our town administrator or CFO.
I tell them, I tell them to call at all the time about your financial policies, which you did in a short period of time. It was a commitment, and it's really paying off on your financials.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
It wouldn't have been possible without the support of the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee, who helped us push this along, so...
I mean, I think it's... You know, I say someone has 8% of the reserves, I get excited, never mind up in the 20s. I mean, that's... I mean, it definitely got you increasing your bond rating.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in.
Hopefully, your night's a little bit quicker.
You've got a long agenda ahead of us.
I figured I was at the end.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have... Well, I'm going to ask if Verizon is here. Anybody from Verizon? Okay. We'll move along. The next we have is a communication from Glenn Krawski, from the EBT Environmental Consultants, regarding Dunn's Brook signage. You all got a notice in your packets that he's sent us along this information to just let us know that the signage is up. And Dunn's Brook signs are right there at Drury Square, as you can see the pictures that were in your packets. And it says, "In the near future, we will be working to clean the banks of the human trash, so that when people drive by, walk over, or walk along the brook, it will be ecstatically pleasing." So it's not just a sign, it's a little bit of an effort behind it. So I look forward to seeing what goes on with that. Thank you very much. Okay. Next is my pleasure. So that she's been with us for six years, and I've had the ability to work with her for the past four, actually five now. And we can't say enough about Mrs. Denise Brotherton. She's done an excellent job. She has the passion for the town of Auburn. She has a passion for people, and we've been so lucky to have her along with us. She's been involved in so many different things. She's been elected to the board on May 19, 2011. I came in 2012. And she'll serve now till May 16, 2017. She's had six years here and six years of... Well, I don't know. You can take a look at any one of us and say, "Has it been great or has it not?" It's been great, and you've added to it immensely, and we really do appreciate everything that you've done. She's been on the Board of Selectman Policy Subcommittee from June 2011 to date, and she's been on the Elementary Schools Reuse and Disposition Advisory Group since January of 2015. And she's also on the Housing Subcommittee as of March 2017. Denise, we can't say enough, we appreciate all that you've done. Again, the passion is the town, the passion is people, and it shows every time we see you, every time you speak, and we do appreciate everything. And I'll turn it over to board members. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Brotherton, I've had the privilege of working with you since you were first elected. And I can say, boy, a lot happens over those six years, huh? And I can say without a doubt, no matter what has happened at this board, whether it was a controversial vote, whether it was a very tense meeting, whether people were on the attack of the Board of Selectmen, every issue that you've dealt with in the last six years, you handle it with the utmost respect and the utmost dignity. I sometimes think some of us could take a lesson from you, because sitting up here can be challenging. It can be challenging. I've seen you grow. I wish you were staying, because I've seen you grow over the years. You know, sometimes criticized for not saying enough, but I'll say this to the people criticizing you for not saying enough. It's because she only spoke when she had something profound to say. She didn't just speak to hear herself speak. You've brought so much to the table, your knowledge, your passion for the town, your comments from residents. I had the privilege of working with you on the Subcommittee. We had many, many meetings of the Subcommittee. And you will be a great loss to residents, showed you twice that you were much needed on this board. Wish you were doing it again. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your six years. It was a pleasure to serve on the board with you for the last six years.
Thank you.
I'll just say, thank you very much for your service and inviting me in last year and making things a little easier for me, and a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
I wish I had something nice to say, Denise, but I don't.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow Mrs. Goodrich if I have nothing to say. Well, I was very glad to see that we've added, because last year we didn't have this item. So I'm glad, and I hope going forward, that the board will keep this, because it is very important. And I don't really have a heck of a lot to say, other than like Lionel, thank you. It has been a joy to serve with you. I wish you the best of luck, and I hope you will continue to serve the community going forward in whatever endeavor you so choose. So good luck. We'll miss you, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you. Would you...
Thank you very much. I don't even know where to begin. It's been such a pleasure to work with you for six years, and I think both professionally and personally, over six years, you really get to know your fellow board members. And I've just developed a great personal relationship with you, as well as professional. And I think that everything that you've done for the town has been tremendous. You really do have a passion for Auburn, you have a passion for the seniors. I can't say enough how thrilled that we are that you're on the Housing Subcommittee. That's a really critical, important project, and to bring your passion to that project is great, along with the other committee members. So I'm thrilled with that. I also have to say, just individual meetings, Ed and I have had the opportunity to work with you and sit down and go through with the tax classification and all the other exciting financial things that we meet with the board members on. And you grasp it, you understand it, and it makes our jobs easier. And we can't thank you enough for all the support you've given us for the last six years. You've always been there for us. You never hesitate to ask a question when you get a question from a resident, and never hesitate to knock on one of our doors and find out what it's all about to get back to that resident. So the residents have truly benefited from you being on the board. So thank you, and I hope we are able to stay in touch with you and keep you involved in other aspects of the community, because you do bring so much to the table.
Absolutely.
Sure. Denise...
Foreign language teacher.
Yeah, we laughed about that earlier today, how I think when we were talking about the town's finances, that at some point early on, it was like I was speaking a foreign language. But Denise learned very quickly, and there was an eagerness there to learn more about the numbers and how it impacted the residents of the community, and how she wanted to get involved and understand, and met with Cindy and I. So she was well-prepared at the tax recap hearings, because she knew it meant a lot to her neighbors and to the community that she represented. So I want to thank you for that, because it's not easy. There are people that are involved with this for years that have a hard time grasping it. So thank you for being patient, and it was great working with you, and you always made yourself available to both, to the entire town administration. So we want to wish you well, and please stay involved, because I know you've made a big difference in the community that you've represented. So we wish you well.
Thank you.
Chief Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Brotherton, I personally want to thank you as well for your six years of service to the Board of Selectmen. I have watched you over the last six years handle this position with a tremendous amount of grace, and it's something that I truly appreciate, and I know that it's something that the residents of this community appreciate. You have a passion for the seniors in this town that I've had the opportunity to witness firsthand, as our department has worked very closely with you over the last six years on initiatives that are directly related to the seniors and their well-being, whether it was fall prevention issues, hoarding issues. You spent a considerable amount of time over the years with firefighter DiDonato, who works very closely with the seniors. And your passion for them should not go unnoticed, and I'm hoping that it still continues, and that our department keeps that relationship. But again, personally, I want to thank you for all of the support that you have given me personally, but also the fire rescue department. And we all extend a congratulations to you and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Sharon.
Denise, very briefly, because you know how much I like to speak at meetings, but I will miss you very much. You've made my job easier with being very supportive of me, and just your general attitude and kindness to everyone. And I wish you only happiness and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if I just want to add, I wanted to add one thing, too, because I just briefly
touched on it when I said how much I've become personally close, but I want to say why, too. I admire and respect you so much for what you've done for this community in the face of tragedy that you face, and I just want everyone to know that Denise has been a huge support for me in the tragedy that I've faced personally. So I think I admire you, I look up to you, and I hope that I can get through what we're living through, as well as you've gotten through it with your family. Can't say enough about how you make it easier for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise...
Is it my turn?
Can you make it through this?
I don't know. This is very bittersweet, and I knew this evening was going to be extremely tough on me. However, it's not as long, trust me. If I might pardon myself from my peers up here at the Selectman desk, I would like to speak to the residents. I need to thank the residents for the past two terms, because it was your votes that put me in this seat. I have been honored to serve you in any capacity that I could over the past six years. It is very humbling to sit before you tonight as I say goodbye. But my goodbye isn't for good. I'm sticking around. There are a lot of issues that I have become involved with. I've been in this town for 58 years. I did just turn 40, so I'm not quite sure where the other 18 came from. I have raised my family here in Auburn. They have been through the Auburn Public Schools, as I have. I've been a practicing member of St. Joseph's Church, along with my six boys. This town means a tremendous amount to me, and the residents mean a tremendous amount to me. I thank you for your continued support as residents. However, I'm going to ask, please don't be the background noise in something. Be the voice. Come forward, speak to the department head and/or department that you feel as though can answer your question. This is the most open-armed community I have ever seen in my life. Utilize the people that are before you. Be a voice and support what they have to offer you. I want to take this opportunity to work in the past with Mr. Timothy Hicks, Mr. Bob Grossman, and Mr. Steve Simoni, and for their mentoring over the years that I served with them. I want to take this opportunity to wish the best of luck to Mr. Carpenter, to Mr. LaLiberty, and Nick, because I'm not going to butcher poor Nick's last name. I congratulate them and I wish them all luck in the future. Selectmen. Vote. I thank them for being compassionate and respectful. As you know, I'm very big on respect. I want to take this opportunity to thank the department heads that have supported their departments, have shown nothing but respect to the residents and to the board with your presentations, your questions, and concerns. We are so fortunate on what this town has for public safety. I will always continue to support any endeavor Chief Coleman or Chief Selukas that you ever have, and please don't hesitate to call me. I'm not a good driver, but I can answer the phone. Where do I begin with my board members? Hi, Doreen.
There's no more tissues in the bathroom.
Thank you for six years of the most powerful mentoring that someone could ask for. If Doreen didn't have the answer, she sure know where to point me. Your friendship will never be forgotten, and I'm still only a phone call away. Mr. Holstrom, thank you for being a mentor to this board over the past year and for your support. You and I go back. I'm a lot younger than you, but Mr. Holstrom and I did also grow up in the town, and I've been able to... My memory serves me with a family to be so proud of, and Mr. Holstrom's family. Mr. Berthium, welcome aboard. I hope your first year was easy. You also had your turbulence. I pray to God for the strength. I respect Nicole and wish her, your brother-daughter, nothing but the best of luck. Mr. Carpenter, I don't have much to say.
Gotcha.
Well, I don't mean to deny any good feelings.
I thank you very much for working alongside of you. I wish you the best. I could not ask for better mentors. Ed, someday that foreign language... You do realize I don't even balance my checkbook. Okay? Now I'm on public TV, okay? Thank you for your support for me, for my... Thank you for your support for me, for my numerous questions, for your teachings to me and answering all those questions must have been tough. To Sharon, she's also known as the backbone in my eyes. Reagan, Patsy Biorogod and Sue, unbelievable ancillary staff. Please utilize them, please utilize them, they are incredible. To my dear friend, Ms. Jacobson, you have brought nothing but professionalism, charisma, respect, joy, friendship to me over the past six years. I thank you, all of you, so very much and to the town for their continued support. You will be seeing me on housing committees. I actually will be with Ms. Weston tomorrow night. I look forward, I look forward to looking for more housing for our elderly and our low-income residents, we need it. And you just never know where I'm going to show up. But I will be there and I will be on committees and I will be in a volunteering role and I will be very happy. I wish all of you the best. I thank you all. Please let all of our public safety workers be safe along with our board members and all of their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
You can still make motions tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Next we have on the agenda. We've got one more gift acceptance for the DPW Highway Division and it's a 48-inch visio flat-screen television and it's approximately market value of $200 for the Highway Lunchroom.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. We move on to drain layer license. This is for Guaranteed Builders Incorporated, East Douglas. You have your information, your packets in front of you. Is there any questions, comments? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now we have another drain layer license from Little Diggers of Auburn, Mass. And your documents are in front of you. Is there any questions, comments? Being none, I will entertain a motion. Mrs. Brotherton?
I'd like to make a, is this a joke?
No, absolutely not.
You don't have any more opportunity.
With my honor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no tabled items in front of us tonight. I'm going to ask one more time if there is a representative from Verizon here. I'll ask that we put that on for the May 22 meeting, please, and I guess notify them that we'd like to have them here. Board of Selectman member items, request for a hearing to address the multiple complaints and concerns regarding outdoor entertainment license Sheldon's Harley-Davidson 914 Shepherd Street in Auburn. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if members recall, we issued outdoor entertainment license through June, although the application was for licenses through December. Two weekends ago on Saturday, I received multiple complaints as well as Mr. Carpenter regarding this license. There were several observations that we observed. We observed several issues with the license and respectfully request that we schedule a hearing date for our next Board of Selectman meeting and request that town administration request reports from Auburn Fire Rescue, Auburn Mass Police and the Building Commissioner regarding any reports that they had on this date.
Okay, and the hearing to be set for?
I don't have my calendar in front of me.
May 22 is our next meeting, yeah.
May 22 at 7:10 p.m.
Okay.
Second.
Sharon, have you got that?
Yes, but I think we have another hearing at 7:10. We have the stop sign hearing. Do we do 7:15?
7:15.
Okay, 7:15. Is there a second?
Sounds good.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. May 22 at 7:15. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're, seeing that we could not schedule a hearing, you know, because we needed to give them 10 days' notification, I believe that there may be another event scheduled in the interim. So I just respectfully request town administration to work with her departments, police, fire, building and be sure that these are safe events because several of the concerns were safety issues. So if police and fire can monitor, be given those dates and monitor just to ensure that these are safe events that they're having until we're able to bring them before the board.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Through the chair, last week when we learned of the incident on Saturday, obviously through police and fire and building commissioner as well as yourselves, we held an internal meeting with the DPW Director, police, fire, building commissioner to identify what the issues may be and how to move forward with this. We are in the process of preparing a recommendation to you for the evening of your hearing. And we also, through the chief, both chiefs, are aware of another event planned where there is no entertainment that we're aware of. The event is for a Mother's Day event taking place on Sunday. There were no other things on the calendar that they provided to us nor on their website, that appears to be the only item, but for a sidewalk sale and those happen frequently. They do not and have not had events affiliated with it. That being said, we've asked both police and fire to reach out to the owners following tonight's vote. They're holding off to make sure you wanted to have the hearing. Reach out to them and ensure that if they need additional police details, if they decide to do anything further than the sidewalk event, that they are highly encouraged to have the details. That's a public safety issue. It's, while it's attached to their license per se, it's also an issue the police chief feels very strongly about to make sure that there may be additional details if needed. And likewise, the fire chief has asked his command staff to reach out to ensure that fire lanes are maintained and that there is room for an ambulance if needed or fire apparatus to turn around regardless of what those events are between now and the time they have a hearing. So that will be taken care of this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else? Okay, any public comments? Being none? We have minutes from February 27, 2017. Is there any comments, questions, concerns, errors, omission? I guess that about covers it all. If not, I'll accept them as presented. And before we go, Denise, thank you for your service. Thank you for your passion. Auburn's a better place because of you. Thank you.
You are very welcome. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.